I'd like to call the meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education, April 10th, to order. It's a work session. I welcome everyone that's here. If we could all rise, we'll have the invocation and pledge. We could all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for such a beautiful day. We thank you for the wonderful lives that you blessed us with, Lord. Please be with the people that have heartache and loss in their lives. Comfort them like only you can. Please guide us tonight as we make decisions for others and help us to do what's best, Lord. Thank you so much for all your blessings, and please help us to use those blessings for the betterment of the world. We ask this and everything else in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Tom. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, first we have presentation and discussion items, and we have our Inspire presentations with Paige Arnett and Brandy Canizaro.
While Paige is loading her presentation, you all are very familiar with the Inspire program as we've been doing this since 2010. But we have several of our APs who participated this year and have done a great job, and we'd like to give them the opportunity to share with you their great work because it really is, they have really done some innovative and some really great things with, from TEACs, which you all are familiar with and have heard a lot about, to working with math and all kinds of things. So, we do have Paige Arnett, who's the Assistant Principal at Hall Creek, and Brandy Canizaro, who's the Assistant Principal at South Forsyth High School, and they'll be presenting their project. I did want to point out and brag on the program a little bit that since 2010, we have appointed six principals, and out of those six principals that have been appointed, all but two of those have gone through the Inspire program. So, we're really proud of our program. They focus on school improvements, instructional leadership, and giving them guidance and help and answering questions that they may have, but giving them experience to conduct the project and develop the project, evaluate it within their own school. So, I'll stop and let you get to the good part, and Paige, we'll let you share your project. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I don't need this mic or not. My name is Paige Arnett. I am the Assistant Principal at Hall Creek Elementary. My Inspire program was a TEACs pilot, really focused on the TAPs, the standards, not as much the whole evaluation. But at Hall Creek, the reason I chose a TEACs pilot was, number one, it's about to come down the pipe, and we need to get ready at our school and at the system level. And we wanted to take teachers through the full evaluation and, for us as administrators, feel the weight of all the responsibility with observations and feedback that was going to be necessary with a full implementation of TEACs. The other thing was, I've worked in another district, neighboring district, where we used the previous class keys. It was kind of the precursor to TEACs, and so we did that as our actual evaluation. So, I had some experience with it, and I really enjoyed using some set research-based standards for teachers in order to give them some specific feedback about their practice in the classroom. Through my experience in the previous district, I found that that alone probably more so than anything I'd ever done in terms of professional learning, had a bigger impact on teacher performance and a change in their practice in the classroom was that specific feedback. Just like we want to give and ask teachers to give specific feedback to students, we need to be giving teachers specific feedback on the actions they're taking in the classroom. It was also a direct link where the teachers are the link between the full school and the student. They are the link there. And so, we needed to make a connection between what was being taught in the classroom through curriculum and what was being expected of a school through the gap standards. So, that TAPs was that connection. The other thing was, we had feedback at my school from a GAPS analysis and our SIP goals, and it was a way to connect them to some concrete standards. And for me, it was a professional area of interest. I love being in the classroom, and I love talking to teachers about instruction and talking to students about their learning. So, it was really fun for me to have a good reason to be in the classroom even more than normal. I know you're familiar with the TEACs process, but it is a three kind of prong evaluation where there's the TAP standards for teachers, there's a student growth and achievement piece, which is probably the piece we did the least with in our pilot, and then the surveys of instructional practice, which is what we would give in elementary school only to third through fifth graders. Those were the ages that were determined it was appropriate for them. The goals for our pilot were to make those direct connections for teachers where we had not had those concrete standards or used them yet for teachers. And that concrete nature of the standards was very good. They really appreciated that part. In terms of what they were being evaluated, they could see it in writing. We wanted to change teachers' view of evaluation. If the truth be known, we kind of did an informal survey when we first talked about TEACs, and we talked about how they felt about evaluation. And some of the connotations for evaluation were fear-oriented a little bit or even negative. And it should be a growth process. It should be, where are you now and where do you want to be growth-wise? So, we wanted to change that perception, and I think the TEACs process in general helps us do that. We wanted to increase teachers' awareness overall what they're doing right. Many times, that was the comments that I heard from teachers was they couldn't put their finger. They could see that their students were learning. They could have all kinds of data, but not, sometimes they couldn't put their finger on exactly what it was that they were doing that was producing that success in students and being effective. So, the standards gave them that concrete piece. And hopefully, overall, if you increase their effectiveness, we will increase student achievement. We do want to make that move from good to great. In the beginning of the year, we did feel very strongly, Dr. Coker and I, that the pilot would be voluntary. We didn't want to force anybody into it. We wanted it to be real. So, we did an, or I did an orientation for the entire faculty before school started at the beginning of this year and outlined the parameters of the pilot, and we actually had 10 volunteers out of our staff. And it just happened that we had grade-level teachers from a variety of grades. We had two special ed teachers. We had a music teacher. So, we had a good variety of teachers that actually volunteered, which was nice. We had an initial TEACs meeting where we talked a little more in detail about what I expected of them and more so what they could expect from me in terms of observations and feedback and meetings and discussions and conversations. Participants did a self-assessment, which is part of the evaluation process, and we held pre-conferences individually, myself and the volunteers, so we could talk about individual strengths and weaknesses from their pre-assessment. This is a little kind of candid thing from one of our participants.
All right. I chose to volunteer for the TEACs evaluation mainly because of my fear of the unknown. I wanted to learn about the evaluation system and how it applied specifically to the special education classroom and the differences that we have there. I wanted to see how the evaluation took those differences into consideration. I expected to learn a lot and definitely have a sense of ease going into the next school year.
She's probably very smart to do that, Paige, to get her feet wet.
She was. She was wonderful. We had monthly meetings where we took the 10 standards and actually unpacked them very much like teachers would with their students with Common Core standards, and we talked about vocabulary in the standards. What does that mean, having a common understanding with words like consistently or continually? What does that mean? That it's happening every minute or every day or once a week or things like that. We kind of came to a common understanding about what those standards meant for us as a group. We used some fact sheets, some information and resources that the DOE had provided. And we also did a monthly training with some key standards with our entire faculty because we didn't want to bring this small group so far along and leave the entire faculty kind of behind. So, we did some of the same activities on a smaller scale in faculty meetings once a month as we went. And here's another little candid.
Hi. I definitely feel like this has been a more reflective process. As an other areas teacher, I feel like it has allowed me to delve more into the standards that the general education population is working with and understand them more and find out what is necessary for me as a teacher to be doing. And I feel like that I've learned through the feedback that I'm actually doing a lot more than I thought that I was doing.
Exactly right.
During the actual observations, we did do the full two cycles where we do two walkthroughs, which were shorter, still with written feedback, but shorter in length, and then one formative. The first cycle, we did announce. So, we planned those and scheduled those ahead of time, and we set ourselves a Thanksgiving goal. So, we finished those, that round for everybody by Thanksgiving and did a mid-year conference at that time and kind of looked at our pre-assessment and then looked at what we had seen through the feedback and ratings and things through the observations. And then the second cycle was another two short walkthroughs and a formative, which were what we used to call a formal observation, but a formative, and those were all unannounced. So, the second round was more like probably what the TEACs will be like next year. I did provide, and you'll see in your handout packet, some examples of the feedback, the written feedback that I gave teachers as I went into classrooms. But one of the things I did was just do a kind of a court reporter because many times, our perception of what people see is different than what's actually seen. So, I did an observation summary, just what all I saw, what kids said, that kind of thing. And then I talked about what I really loved in the classroom and then what I wondered, what things went through my head. I wonder how that group was formed, or I wonder why that group was doing something different than something else, which really went along with standards like differentiation and use of assessment data. I also started asking students about what they were learning and how did they know what they were supposed to learn, and how did they know when they had learned it or mastered it, which sometimes was very comical. I worked in elementary schools, so some of the answers were funny, but they were very telling to teachers, very powerful, when teachers had a perception of what kids understood they were supposed to learn and what kids were able to articulate sometimes was different. It was very nice. And then we gave specific feedback on evidence on the 10 standards. We did a mid-year conference again in Thanksgiving, and we also required after that first rotation, our first observation cycle, that the teachers in the pilot take that same observation feedback form and go see one of their peers and give that feedback so they could feel what it felt like to be in the administrator's shoes, having to give feedback and ask students questions and word things in a way that's positive but constructive. I wanted them to feel both sides of the coin.
Well, I have found that this year, doing writing, I've made lots of changes. I'm very impressed with what my kids are able to do in giving feedback, and I've also changed things in my math groups. I now have kids choosing their math groups and their levels, and they're responsible for their learning.
She was just asked, based on the observations and feedback, what has changed in her classroom. Then we did post-conferences where we culminated all of this into actual ratings on the 10 standards. And then I got everybody together and gave them, we put some quiet music on and had about 30 minutes, and I asked them to give some written reflection. I had given them a lot of written feedback, and so I was asking them for some written feedback. And we asked four real questions, which is where some of these little candid's came from. Why did you volunteer, number one? How has your perspective on teacher evaluation changed? Because one of our goals was to change the perception of evaluation. How has your practice changed because of the study of the standards and the feedback? And how can this process be improved as we move forward for the whole faculty? And I have one more here.
My teaching changed a lot after my first two formative observations. The feedback I received helped me point out the areas in which I was weaker and allowed me to focus on improving those parts of my teaching. The feedback helped me develop a new way of assessing my music students while still making the most of our classroom time.
After we had finished all this, we really took a step back and wanted to, not only had give people experience and give me experience in the whole process, but really take a hard look at lessons learned. What did we do really well and what can translate well into the whole group? Because 10 versus 60 is a big difference. So, we presented those pilot results to the leadership team, and we're going to continue to have conversations about that as we develop school improvement goals and professional learning plans for next year. We're going to continue that professional study of the TAP standards, just like I think teachers are still learning as they teach about the Common Core. It's going to take a little while until we fully understand what the expectation is with TEACs and the TAP standards. And one thing that we felt like a lesson we've already learned is that we, as an administrative team, in order to move from that 10 to 60 with the full six observations and the type of written feedback and attention that we gave the pilot, is that we have to have a clear strategy before school starts about how we're going to get all the observations and feedback in. Because if I scheduled it, we set that date for Thanksgiving, and so we had to meet the deadline, and so we got busy scheduling things. But many times, I'm sure it happens in your work too, there's lots of things on your plate, and so if it's not scheduled, it doesn't always get done. And we found that we couldn't even wait until September to start scheduling those, that we need to have those on the calendar for specific teachers before pre-planning ends, which is a big undertaking, but I think it's going to be necessary in order to make that workload on the administrative side manageable. I think it can be done, but I think it's going to take a lot of planning on our part. We also need to secure some additional training. One thing we did not do as much with is use the electronic end of the DOE platform. There were some technical issues there in access. There were certain browsers you had to use, and there's just things that we need as a school more training on in order to be efficient with the platform. And we also need to confirm the student achievement measures, and I know the district right now is in the process of making those decisions. As a district, and we'll follow whatever that decision is, what are those, that prong that we really didn't do a whole lot with? We did the TAPs prong, but that student achievement piece, you know, whether it be something standardized or running records or something like that, but that we would identify and train all our staff if necessary on those measures so that they're clear about how they're going to be measured in that regard. Do you all have any questions?
It sounds like such a nice improvement over how things were done in the past, but obviously, it's going to be a big undertaking. Do you have any idea now, going into it for next year, what percent of your time this is going to take? Because it's good, but you're busy.
That's a very good question. I don't know if I can tell you a percentage.
A lot.
A lot. That's the percentage. Again, I think it has to be scheduled. I think that I got more efficient with the feedback, and if you see the handouts that you have, I worked very hard at giving detailed feedback, the kind of feedback I would want them to give students. I hope that I am efficient enough to continue to be that detailed and that quick with feedback with that many teachers, because I will probably at least be doubled in the number that I'll evaluate next year based on the administrative staff we have in our building. And I know at high schools, they probably have even more than that. So, it will be a very large, a very large amount of our time, a very strong focus.
I liked your option of having the teachers give the results back to another one to kind of have the, you know, shoe on the other foot type of situation. Did you get feedback on how that was for them?
You know, actually, we did. It has spurred a request to go see more teachers, and I think that that, we do a lot of professional learning, and I think that's very important. But many times, teachers are very apt at going to watch other teachers and picking up those pieces to add to their toolbox. And so, I think just having time to go and observe other teachers and see how they do it is a valuable piece of professional learning to add to what we already do in terms of professional learning. So, it was very positive. And I think the people they went to see were not in our pilot, and they were very receptive to the feedback. I think teachers, just like students, are very thirsty for specific feedback on their practice. They're working very hard for their students. And so, I think they really appreciate, whether it's constructive or positive, hearing what other people think and what other people see in terms of a very concrete set of standards and what they're doing.
I think it was really good, Paige, that you used some teachers that were not in the stream, the normal teacher that does the, to take a music teacher or special needs, and those were the areas that we were concerned about. How are you going to measure something like that? To be able to include that in your pilot, to understand how that all works together, and the one said that she could see, understand the standards better, that the students were learning, and tying that all together. And I know it's going to be a learning experience because to take from 10 to 60, and you're still going to have all those personalities, and you have to be so careful, as you say, to be positive about that without them feeling threatened so that they can use it to be, you know, a positive for the whole school as well as their own careers. But it's going to be interesting to see how this plays out. I think we're all concerned about the time element for administrators trying to get this done and the fact that it might change the whole culture of our school system, which is very open for parents and people coming through, and now your time is even taken even more in that area. It's going to be interesting to see how this plays out, though I think it's positive. It's just logistically going to be a challenge.
Are you able to share the results with other schools?
That's what I mean, my question.
I was thinking that too.
Yeah.
They're the head of the...
Right.
Well, there's others that are doing it.
Others doing pilots like this, yeah.
Well, just about every school. Our black team meets monthly. Our group of about eight schools, the assistant principals meet monthly, and I have been sharing, but they've been sharing with me too, although they're not doing a formal presentation. I believe almost every school is doing some sort of a pilot or an attempt at looking at the standards with their faculty. Everybody's being very proactive about taking a step forward before it actually gets here. And it's interesting that you say about the music teacher. It was a learning experience for me because I taught high school science. So, to be sitting in an elementary school music class and talking about assessment uses, I had to really step back, and I didn't have all the answers for her. But it was really good professional conversation between she and I where I could tell her, okay, this is what it would look like in a more academic setting. How does that translate in your world? And so, we would sort of bounce things off of each other in order to sort of figure out what it looked like there. So, it really, it was a learning experience for me, too.
It is. It's going to be interesting to see next year, at the end of the year, if we could get a report back from some of the other schools and, as well as Hall Creek, to see how the first year has gone, what the feedback has been.
How do we know? How are you going to measure the results of this? I mean, it would be a year or two before you can really, at least a year before you can really see full implementation of any changes. I mean, change along the way, but how do we measure the success?
When I was in a previous district, one of the things that we did, there were more standards. There were, it used to be 26 versus 10, but we actually put every person in the, that was evaluated, all the teachers, and all the standards in a spreadsheet. And it used to be a one to four rating, very much like it is now. It was different terms. But we actually created a spreadsheet for a one, two, three, four for each standard for each teacher. And so, we could average up the ratings for each standard or each teacher. And so, we could actually look at our school in terms of each of these little standards that pertain to the classroom or instructional things and see where our weaknesses were because there was an overall lower rating among all teachers. So, there are ways to turn it into something more concrete because there are concrete ratings versus just a satisfactory or unsatisfactory. So, I think it's worthy of some conversation and some brainstorming because there are ways to do that.
Do they get the resources to take these standards? And I like the fact that there's less standards because that's easier, more attainable for them, more able to focus. If I had to meet 26 standards, I would like give up early. So, even the 10 is a lot. And being in that industry, I look at, did I give that employee the ability to improve themselves on their own? Did I give them the resources to go and figure out how to meet this standard at a high proficiency level? So, do you give out those kind of resources to the teacher? Because I heard in the comments and some other things where the assessment was where I got the feedback as opposed to I went out seeking and learning on my own and then brought it in the classroom. The assessment should just be a reflection of that work that I did.
The DOE has actually developed a lot of really good resources in terms of the standards themselves, where they came from, you know, what is, where are some examples of that in a classroom. But I think our conversation in meetings about what does this actually mean was probably the most powerful way to get to that. And I think that's where doing this really well is going to take an enormous amount of time. Just getting all the observations and giving people feedback is going to take a significant amount of time. But having those professional conversations on a regular basis that really dive into what does this really mean and what does it really look like in the classroom? That's the part that we had the luxury of doing because we had such a small group.
Yeah, doing that during professional development time and letting them role-play, even practice in a non-threatening way with other teachers in the room as students, you know, might be a useful use of that time and working on the standards. Isn't that the behaviors we want them all to exhibit at the top proficiency?
Sure.
Very good. Interesting. Good afternoon. My name is Brandy Canizaro. I'm an Assistant Principal at South Forsyth High School. I've worked there for the last 10 years, five years as an AP. And my previous background is a high school math teacher. So, for my project this year with Inspire, I chose differentiation in high school mathematics classes. The purpose and kind of reason behind this is part of our South Continuous Improvement Plan. There's three areas we're focusing on this year, three of our goals that we'll continue to work on over the next three years. We want to increase our CCRPI score. We want to increase differentiation in classrooms, and we also are working to implement the TEAC standards into our instruction, and we also are working, we have a small pilot going on as well. Our first school goal has to do with the CCRPI score, and we want to increase it, obviously. One area of concern from last year in 2012, 13 was our Coordinated Algebra EOC T passing rate. It was 73%. This was the highest in the district, but this was a huge drop from what we were used to. In high school math, EOC T courses of algebra and geometry in the past and Math I and Math II, we typically were passing at 95 to 96%. So, to get that 73% was devastating to our math teachers when that came back. They were hard-hit. So, we do want to definitely focus in that area. Our second goal for the year is to work with professional learning in a variety of areas. One is differentiation. This is a result of our GAPS feedback. Our GAPS visit was in October of 2012. A low area for us was differentiation, and that was kind of across the county, especially in the high school level. That was something that when the observers came into our classrooms and when they interviewed teachers and students and staff, they were not seeing the differentiation piece or the personalized learning piece. And then the third goal has to do with TEACs. There's two standards that are specific to this particular project, differentiated instruction standard four and standard six assessment uses. How are the teachers using that assessment data to guide their instruction? Here's our Coordinated Algebra EOC T data. So, the passing rate last school year for Georgia for the entire state was 37%, which is extremely low. For South, we were at 73%. It's, so, looking at that, South did great. Forsyth County did great, but that, you know, that's just, that's not good enough for us. But more importantly, and what kind of led to this project and implementation is in our Coordinated Algebra Support Classes. So, in high school, the kids take their math class, and then we have a handful of students that also take that math support class, y'all are well aware of. We've had them in place. Well, if you look at just our support students last year at South in Coordinated Algebra Support and Coordinated Algebra Math Class, only 40% of those kids passed the EOC T. So, that's concerning, and that's much closer to the state rate. So, those are the kids we wanted to focus on. So, we have 81 students that are in Coordinated Algebra Support this school year. We have four sections of the course, and we were able to schedule them all first period, so first thing in the morning. The really neat thing that worked out this year is all four of those classes are taught by math teachers, but each class has a co-teacher. So, a co-teacher from our special ed department or ESOL department. So, between the four classes, there's actually eight certified teachers that can work with those students. So, with differentiation, a couple of definitions. One is providing several learning options or different paths to learning, which helps students take in information and make sense of concepts and skills, provide appropriate levels of challenge for all students, including those who lag behind, those who are advanced, and those right in the middle. I think one thing, if you talk to high school teachers, they kind of felt like, we do differentiate. We have AP classes, honors classes, and on-level, and we have resource. They think that's differentiation. Most teachers, most teachers teach to the middle of the class. You have your kids, I teach them to the middle. That's going to get the most students. So, this is a change for us to differentiate and provide personalized learning, and it's a challenge for many of our teachers. So, we decided to start small, just in the support classes this year. We have content team meetings. Our math department and all of our core departments do have common planning, sixth period during the day, so that gives them time each week to meet. And they looked at pre and post-assessment data and divided students into the eight groups because we had eight teachers that would be... students into the eight groups because we had eight teachers that would be able to work with those students. We provided differentiated lessons to the students. Once again, pay, based on the pre and post-assessments. We also did tiered assignments within the groups. So students might have enrichment work, on-level work, or remediation work, depending. Those kids that were truly struggling, we would keep in smaller groups of four to five students, working one-on-one with a teacher, uh, reviewing just kind of the basic math they maybe are missing from prior school years. And we also provided choice, where kids were given multiple types of math questions, and they could choose how they wanted to show what they know. And I have a couple of examples down the road. Here's one. This is, uh, systems function tic-tac-toe. And if you notice, some of the questions towards the top might be your typical math question, what y'all were maybe used to in your math textbooks way back when. And then as you kind of go down the page, they're more, um, hands-on, where they have to be more task-based. I, I thought about not putting this in here because I know everybody's like, oh, my gosh. I don't remember doing that. Um, but just kind of gives choice. So students would do three of these options. And so they could kind of mix and match, you know? And so those lower-level kids might do the ones kind of towards the top. Your more, uh, uh, you know, kids that are doing real well might do some of more of the wordier problems that aren't as intimidating. Uh, tiered assignments. It's not more work, it's different work. So based on what the students' needs are. Here's kind of an example. So we have our enrichment, uh, review sheet, and then we have our remediation review sheet. So if you notice, the enrichment review sheet is more task-based. And I know y'all have heard lots about math tasks, so it's more task-based. And then our remediation sheet is more like just our typical math problems. You know, you're doing them step-by-step, working them out, things like that, graphing. Uh, the results. One thing I wanted to say, so we actually worked to incorporate a differentiated lesson each unit in math. So each unit, the teachers would meet at the beginning. Um, sometimes they would work to group the students before they took their actual unit test. So they would do their quizzes and look at that data, and then group kids to kind of do remediation and review before testing. Then we also, for some of the units, chose to take the unit test, see how the students do, then group the kids for the remediation piece. So we kind of did it back and forth throughout the year and alternated. Um, the results. So for students passing coordinate algebra, the actual coordinate algebra math class, for the first nine weeks in the first semester, we had seventy-seven percent of those students passing, which was great. We did drop this third nine weeks. I think obviously we were getting into harder material. And sixty-seven percent is lower. However, we are still way ahead of the forty percent passing rate on the EOC T last May. So we do expect, moving forward, um, with this May EOC T, that our results are going to be higher for our school as a whole, for the EOC T in coordinate algebra, but as well with those support kids.
We also lost several days of school during that.
Yes. I was trying to be positive. Yes, we lost some snow days.
Lost some snow days.
Um, so we definitely have had some gaps where, you know, they missed almost a week, and then you have to come back in. But, uh, you know, math is a hard course. It is probably one of the hardest classes we teach in high school because it's just, it's not something, you know, if you don't get this day, moving on to the next day, you're going to struggle. It's not something parents feel comfortable helping their students with. Most parents are like, math is not my thing. I wasn't good at it. Um, so, you know, that is, that's a battle we face, but we have a great group of teachers that are working with our kids. Our next steps. We do plan to incorporate this as an innovative practice in our CCRPI for this school year. And next year, we are looking to incorporate this in our analytic geometry support tenth grade math courses. And these students will have already be familiar with it, and so they'll roll up and continue. And then we would like to do this with Spanish Two. We have probably six hundred kids taking Spanish Two in ninth grade. Um, kind of the key, I feel, is to be able to have multiple teachers. And to do that, you need to schedule classes where you have several sections the same period. So students can mix and match and go to different classrooms. And so one thing I also didn't mention earlier, uh, when we did our differentiated lessons, you didn't necessarily stay with your teacher. You might, uh, be with, uh, Mr. Cleveland's teacher, and then you might have Dr. Evans the next day. So we mixed and matched kids around. So you weren't with your same teacher. So you also had a chance to get instruction, possibly using a different method or just different personality.
Did the kids get a chance to do any feedback, like, not so much that teacher, but that style works better for me versus that?
They did provide that. And I think they definitely like any time we can put them in smaller groups. So instead of your typical class of twenty-five, twenty-eight students in support, if you're broken down into a group of ten to twelve kids, I think it's much more, kids are much more comfortable raising their hand and asking questions, working with a partner, working in a group. So I think anytime there's less students, um, they, the kids are much more comfortable. And there's definitely more one-on-one work with the teacher and the student. Other questions?
What's interesting, um, Brandy, when you were talking about the scores, I was at the state board meeting when those scores first came out. And, um, someone asked, did anybody do well? And somebody thought, oh, Forsyth did really well. And so they wanted some comments of why. And I said, basically, we, we spent a lot of money on staff development as one of the ways to improve all that. But even then, it is so different. And your, your point about parents, a lot of the criticism we, we're hearing now about Common Core things is because we weren't taught this way. It's totally different.
This is, this is the subject parents just feel their hands are tied, and they don't know how to help their students.
Right.
Obviously, we're doing more, uh, teacher-created and online resources, so they want that textbook.
Yeah.
And they get, um, they get in a panic. But yes, it is, I think boils down to it's different than what we grew up learning math. Um, they feel out of disadvantage.
I think your numbers are phenomenal, though. It tells us.
We're there. We're very excited. We're very excited to see how, um, the EOC T goes in May.
You going to let us know?
Absolutely. We will be doing it this year.
Really?
Brandy, I've tried to resist asking you this question very hard, but it just didn't work. So I'm going to go ahead and ask you. As a math teacher, now an administrator, you had the choice to go back to, uh, discrete as opposed to integrated mathematics. What would your preference be?
I would stick with integrated. I think it's, um, I think it's provide, and I taught geometry and algebra, too. So I only taught, uh, that. But I, I like where we are now. I think we are making better, our students are coming out better prepared for college and beyond. And I think we're going to continue to see that with our SAT scores rising, as well as the kids being prepared when they do get into college and go into those careers. So I think they're becoming more well-rounded as a math student versus when we were compartmentalized. And I really feel if you spoke to, uh, math teachers in the building, they would agree. They are enjoying this curriculum. So I think once we, I think the hardest, uh, when we adapted to GPS with Math One, Two, Three, Four, that was difficult because the math teachers like myself, who'd been around forever, that was huge. But it actually has been a pretty easy transition for them into the Common Core because they already are used to teaching the standards, not just teaching what's in the textbook in order.
Yeah, and I can tell just by looking at some of your examples, have, be, having a ma- math background and going into tech and doing calculus and, and going past this, I remember this like it was yesterday. And basically, when I look at some of the formulas, that's all they gave us, was the how to turn the wrench. But I see on here some more practical examples of what that's doing and how that formula really relates to life.
Yes.
And, and to me, that's more engaging in why I'm doing this math and not just executing upon the formula to get answers.
And I think that's the piece with the college readiness, getting our kids ready for, um, college and career readiness. Absolutely.
Or even employment. When you go to get a job or you're working, your boss doesn't say, hey, can you solve this equation? Okay, solve this problem. You figure out how.
Right.
And then give me a presentation when you're all done. So explain it and justify it. So it's the real world.
Thank you. This has been great.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, and next, I think we are going to have Tim to talk about an easement.
I'll start real quickly. I'm going to go over the parcel known as right-of-way number eighteen. This is on the, uh, second phase of the Old Atlanta Road Widening Project. The county's getting ready to initiate. This one came to us before. The county asked us to review it, and y'all had approved to donate it. Uh, this little section is zero point zero five seven acres. It is a very small track. And basically, it looked, let's see if I can get my view to turn.
Some of the earlier ones are hard to tell which side of the, were they farther down by Johns Creek, or were they by South Middle, or which area they were?
Yep. Um, this one, as you can see, the first map shows right at the intersection where Old Atlanta makes a right-hand turn past the middle school. And the little track you'll see coming up here in yellow is basically enough of the area along the shoulder for them to create what they call the ten-foot-wide multi-use, uh, path or extra-wide sidewalk along that section of, uh, Old Atlanta Road as you head back down towards, uh, see where my cursor moves, back towards the, uh, Goodyear McDonald's area. So it's that little strip just on that little frontage. Uh, this piece of property is a higher elevation than the PE field that's down below it. So it had no effect on our property there. And again, like I said, this one came to us earlier on. Uh, we reviewed it and did accept a, uh, told them that we would accept a donation on that property. But then we had the next piece that came along on phase three, which is identified as zero point two-nine-two acres, just about a third of an acre. And this runs the entire frontage of the Johns Creek Elementary School, uh, beginning kind of where Kemp Road area is. There's a little church there, Kemp Road. Northward, uh, as you go down towards that creek and the little valley area, uh, St. Marlow entrance. And again, we'll have to view. Let's plug this back up a little larger. All right, the first section, you can see the little pink area at the top of the drawing there. That's the top of the bus driveway that comes in the upper level of Johns Creek. Kind of give you a little point of orientation. But this begins at our property line with the Gilstrap family and comes back, is actually going to be heading down south of Old Atlanta Road as you go through these drawings. The yellow area shows, uh, that portion of the, uh, right-of-way where they have some drainage work and all that to tie into. The green area is a construction easement. This is where they will be working to, uh, coordinate the elevation changes as the road widens to either steepen or cut the banks back to make them tie back into the road shoulders.
So those would be those, I believe, forty-five degree angles that they, everybody always does in construction. They cut it down, and then you just leave it.
Well, they cut back to, I think, minimum slope three to one as they're.
Can we route it at the top and make it look good?
We'll see what they can do.
You can always tell when someone comes up and does that.
Like I said, uh, one part of this is, uh, that we did review with the county engineers. The large utility poles that run through there will remain in place. Uh, you see one little section, if you can see as the cursor moves, there's a, uh, wall section that they will construct to wrap around the base of the pole to keep that pole in place. And most of it comes, starting at this area between the bus driveway up to the new driveway is the right-of-way. They are trying to pull as much of this back towards the St. Marlow side of the road. But of course, as you get too far to that side, it becomes quite a steep bank along there. So they did have to kind of cut the corner with us a little bit to smooth that out. And then the next section, again, you see two areas of pink. The area on the left-hand side of the screen is the parent driveway that goes around towards the back of the building, the front entrance of the building. And the next little pink area is actually a little piece of property we own just down below there, uh, with that section. But, uh, this is the primary section where they will need the additional right-of-way. And they do have a little bit of hillside work because there's kind of a large grade elevation between our parent driveway as you go down south to the next piece of property. Uh, it's a copy hill that they'll have to cut back and create some drainage. So that's kind of the scope of the work they're looking to do on our side of the road at Johns Creek. Typically, like I said, we usually work with the county. We, uh, provide them the right-of-way. They typ- typically request these when we're doing a project, give them enough right-of-way for us to establish our turn lanes, deceleration lanes, uh, those type improvements on the county right-of-way. Uh, this one was a little bit larger, so thought needed to bring it to y'all, uh, and let y'all review. Uh, their request with that, basically, three tenths of an acre area shown in yellow is the right-of-way. The green and, and the pink is all ours, but they will be working on that area to get everything tied back to grades.
So they're just doing the right-of-way now? It hasn't been bid out? So do we know the timeframe?
No, not today.
Or is it just too soon to know?
Yeah.
And the turn, the turn lanes, especially around the parent entrance, that's not increasing in size? It's pretty much staying the same?
Repeat that.
Or is it going away? The Johns Creek one here with the parent entrance, there's a small section of turn lane into that.
Yeah, and that's part of what it is, is the road becomes wider where the, uh, traffic flow is going to push that turn lane a little bit more into our property along that section.
But it'll remain the same size?
Yes.
Okay. I travel it every day, so.
It's not going to change it so parents don't have a turn lane anymore, so it's not losing.
It's not going away for sure.
It'll be re-fixed up, so it'll be the same.
There's definitely more of a need for a turn lane there, so.
I just can't wait to see it. It's a long time coming. We've got four-lane road with that.
I'll have to go around it for a while.
As someone who commutes to that regularly, ten, eleven in the morning, yeah, so I will look forward to seeing their effects on either end.
And just to be clear, the areas that we're dealing over are the pink or giving rights way to?
The right-of-way is the area in yellow.
Yellow.
That is the property along the road frontage that we'll actually dedicate back to the county for right-of-way.
Okay.
The green and pink area are construction easements.
Okay, easements. Okay.
The pink is the driveway easement so they can, again, tie in our driveway. Uh, we do have one part of this, uh, that we will be doing separately from whatever y'all decide. We need to go down to verify the sign monument location, determine its setback from the current right-of-way, determine the setback from the new right-of-way, and see if there's going to be any reason for us to have to, uh, relocate that sign. And if so, we will ask them.
I didn't ask that, but, yeah.
We will ask them to.
And we'll have to get permission from them, and it'll be delayed in, on the county. Yeah, we've been through that before.
Well, like I said, we took that one down to Sharon, and they kind of stayed down waiting for them to finish the road so we could figure out just how close the road we could fit it back.
Right.
But we'll make sure they pay for all that, right? We'll make sure they pay.
The county will pay for us to relocate that. Typically, I think they gave us about ten thousand dollars to tear down and relocate the, uh, Sharon Monument. We had to do that section.
Okay.
It was approximate value.
Make sure the electrical works.
Okay, so are we good? We'll vote on this next week, then.
Okay.
How good is everybody? All righty, we just wanted to discuss it. Thanks.
Yeah, just let y'all have.
A heads up.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any future agenda items?
Got a couple.
Okay.
You, yeah, that's all right. Go ahead. No, I was just wondering about the bond referendum. It may all be, be already on next week's agenda. Just to kind of update, since it's only going to be like a month away from next, next week, and just to kind of tell us kind of where we are, communication, what else we can do, what, you know, just to kind of put it fresh in our minds, I think would, would help me, anyway.
Okay.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Kristen?
If staff have time, I would love to see, um, especially since after tonight, we'll be doing the last of the out-of-district requests. I'd like to see a summary report on out-of-districts for this year. Since we, coming off of redistricting, to me, it would be a nice bit of data and information for the next time we have to do it, um, you know, what, what the end result was. How many by school, out of a district we constantly had.
Are you saying how many kids are at every school that's out of district? I mean, what, what info?
Out of district, and for what reason? Was it for, like, from, you know, for X school? Was it primarily because of they were a sibling of, or was it, uh, I mean, high school level? Was it a matter of, you know, curriculum? I needed to go to this school to get that, or, so a summary. Because last time I, I got the data, it was very, I thought it was very interesting. And there was, there was a, a variation between schools. And I think it'd be, I, I thought it was very, it told, it told a lot to me. It was interesting. So I think everybody might like to see that. So kind of summary by school and for what reason.
Maybe next work session be okay.
Next work session, yeah. That's, yeah, not, not the public work session in May. If, if there's a time to do that. The other one I'd like to do, um, as I've been doing a little research, and I'd like to present an idea probably at the May work session, if time permits. If not, then the June, on the topic of school attendance lines and new zonings. Uh, it's something I looked at quite a bit last fall, and I got busy, and I need to do a little bit more research. And I have been looking into what some other schools do that are high-growth systems like ourselves. And, um, one of them has a really interesting idea, and I'd like to do a little more research and present that to the board for discussion. So again, the work session in May, I'd like to do that.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay. So now we have executive session for personnel and out-of-district appeals. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay.